Good evening, everyone. I will now call the, call to order the Chesterfield Planning Commission on April 1st at 7:00 PM. If you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please silence your phones.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you in the audience for coming out tonight. And we have Robert Seibert with us tonight, Township Attorney, Jonathan Palin Township Planner, and Stephanie Osborne with Gilpo's Webster Planners. So let me call the roll. Jaworski.
Here.
Kathy Bosberg. Eric Hyder. Brian Carr.
Here.
Mark Renaud.
Here.
James Klonowski.
Here.
Rick LaBelle.
Here.
And Carl Leonard here. And we have Richard Brokhardt excused, he's absent tonight. I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 18, 2025.
All in favor.
Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Rick LaBelle, to approve the minutes for March 18, 2025. All in favor? Opposed? I would like to, is there any, well, like, any, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Mark Renaud. Are there any questions or comments on the agenda? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have public comments. If anybody from the audience wants to come up, you have three minutes and you can talk about anything you want. When you come up, please sign in and state your name and address, please.
There's a button on the front, would you push it there? It's a little red light should come on right here.
All right. Trevor Schaefer, 55320 Bates Road. Good evening. We stand before concerned residents, united in our commitment to protecting the integrity, safety, and future of our community. We're not here against development, we're here against battles that bypass procedures, private interests ahead of the public good. Two years ago, a developer's property at 24 on Bates Road is destroyed by the Planning Commission. Instead of making that decision, they sued the company, resulting in a highly questionable consent judgment. Now, a newly-formed company connected to the same individuals has submitted an almost identical proposal, hoping it's through by zoning. This is not transparency, this is an attempt to override the processes meant to protect our community. The Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals members are appointed supervisors and confirmed trustees. While directives may not always be explicitly stated, they're certainly implied. Why is this being pushed through so illegally?
Thank you for your comments.
Megan, 28057 Hagan Road. Let's follow the money. Campaign finance records show sudden and substantial donations from company officers and their families, people who have contributed in past actions. Why? This pattern raises serious ethical concerns. We have seen what happens when financial influence seeps into township decisions, corruption, legal consequences, and broken public trust. We will not allow history to repeat itself. Beyond the ethics, this project proposes real environmental risks. How will water runoff be managed? What safeguards exist to protect our groundwater and soil? Why is a new water line being installed in an area where residents rely on well water? If this project is truly safe, why is additional infrastructure being brought in? Why aren't we, what are we being told? Developers claim they can control water displacement, but nature will always take its course. Contaminants will spread, threatening our land, our homes, and Lake St. Clair. Infrastructure concerns are just as troubling. The only possible improvement is paving a portion of 25-mile road. Other township, townships require developers to fund necessary infrastructure, so why not here? Is DT installing 120-kilovolt substation for what is supposedly just an office? That amount of power suggests something much larger is planned. This development is also a direct contradiction of the master plan, updated in 2021, which designate this area as agriculture industrial. If we approve this rezoning, we send a clear message that the master plan means nothing, and that well-funded developers can buy their way around regulations. Residents have made their voices heard. We have written letters, signed petitions, and raised concerns only to be dismissed. Even the township supervisor reportedly said, "This is going to happen no matter what you do." That is unacceptable. We demand transparency, accountability, and responsible development that enhances, not harms, our community. We do not want to be surrounded by 10-foot fences, excessive noise, and environmental hazards. We do not want another shady deal, another consent judgment, another scandal. We have lived through corruption before, and we refuse to let it happen again. Tonight, we ask you to stand with the residents, stand for integrity, stand for the future of this community. The entire Planning Commission has a copy of the extent of the impacts in this 50-page report, as well as Channel 7 and a couple other news, news channels. If anyone wants a copy, just let me know. Please reject this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Sign in, get your name and address, please.
My name is Matthew Haw. I'm from, I'm an attorney at the Erie O'Brien Law Firm, 24055 Jefferson, St. Clair Shores, Good evening. My name is Matthew Haw. I'm here on behalf of the concerned citizens of Chesterfield Township, the adjacent property owners to the proposed special land use. Specifically, I'd like to outline in the memorandum that I submitted to this commission the reasons why the applicant has failed to show it meets the criteria set forth in your court of our ordinances. First, the applicant must satisfy all nine criteria to be granted the special land use variance, or land use, excuse me. Particularly, eight are applicable. Here to show you how each of those particular standards are not met. Standard one, the size and character of this proposed auction center is not in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood. This is 140-acre project, which is a massive industrial project. The meant size of this operation is not in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood as part of the surrounding neighborhood is residential. Standard two, the impact of traffic. The applicant submitted a report based on a one-day traffic impact assessment that is woefully inadequate. There should be a traffic impact assessment based on a larger timeframe, including different days, different months of the year. One day is just not enough. The applicant, standard three, the applicant showed that it's designed to eliminate any possible nuisances to any other nearby use permitted. Here, the nearby use permitted is residential, and the key word here is possible, any possible nuisances. The surrounding property owners can clearly show that there is a possibility of a nuisance from the noise that will be created by this structure, by this special use for the land. An auto auction carrying in back and forth on front truck loaders, vehicles, possibly multiple vehicles, is abundantly going to create a possibility of a nuisance to the surrounding property owners. Furthermore, the noise...
Three minutes has expired.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Please sign in with your name and address, and remember you have three minutes.
Herbert Sawchuk, 53670 Bates Road. Just to continue a bit what the attorney said, there are many issues, or nine issues essentially. One of the key issues is not to negatively affect the value of surrounding properties. And appraisers have looked at this, and they quote similar circumstances, anywhere from 10% to 40% reduction in the value in property. Mr. Trevor, who spoke earlier, will be completely surrounded. His house certainly will not be worth what it is today. It's going to go down. How would you like to go to bed tonight, wake up tomorrow morning, and find out that everybody lost $30,000 that was taken out of your account? That's what's happening to the property owners that live along Bates Road that would be next to this development. They're going to lose value, and it's going to continue on through as long as they live there and that property is there. That's one of the major criterias that I'm sure the board has looked at, and I know at one of the last meetings, you even mentioned you should talk to your appraiser, whether you got a report from him. And I think you're considering this very carefully. And I'm sure there have been comments from people on the main board, or whatever, the legal, there might be legal ramifications. We all have to live with that in this day and age. I think yous need to vote no in response to what they're proposing. It does not meet the requirement for a special land use. When you come for a special land use, you're asking for something above and beyond. Because it wasn't permitted, it wasn't zoned, you're asking for something special, and to get that, you must meet all of the criteria. They haven't done that. Not to speak of environmental concerns, a whole lot of other things, I'm sure there will be diesel trucks delivering and picking up these. They tend to like sit there with their truck running, smoke coming out, and eventually that all settles somewhere. And it might be a slow process, but slowly the ground nature gets, it's dew, and it perks down to somewhere. The other thing is, no matter what we say, and we call it an auto auction yard, whatever, when people drive by and see a bunch of cars, their mind says, "I don't want to live there. It's like a junkyard." It might not be, but you put a berm and a few trees, oh, that's nice, but people drive by that and they see it, and they see a few cars, and they say, "Oh, they're hiding the cars." They're not saying it's nice, it's going to improve the property, it's just negative. So please, as you should, vote no this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? You have three minutes. You state your name and address.
My name is Joe Katic, 32825 Sutton. I'm here looking at this from a different view. There was a sewer line stretching east from the main sewer line coming off I-94, put in that Supervisor Kirsten, instead of paying for another general fund, basically put it on the backs of all the existing customers with a 20-year bond. We're paying $600,000 a year, the existing customers, that have nothing to do with that, for that thing. And in voting for it, even Mr. Seibert said, basically, it's paid for by the developers. They pay pass that. Trustee Bosberg, her vote hung on the fact that Kirsten said, "You would get paid back" as the sewer taps came in for the new developments. Now, this isn't the same area, but there's also another sewer involved that we inherited from McComb County that needs about $11 million in repair. That's going to come out the existing customers, too. Now, you're allowing 150 acres to be used for a junkyard, whatever you want to call it. One sewer tap, maybe a water tap, it's worth about, what's that, $3,000? I'm not sure what they go for anywhere. But in doing that, instead of developing it as a subdivision, where you can put 400 or 500 homes in, you'll get a million and a half dollars back on sewer taps and water taps, and you'll get probably a $2 million property tax yearly from that. Instead, you're going to allow this to go through? What, what kind of property tax are they going to pay on it? I don't know what they paid for it, but you're probably going to get maybe $75,000 a year property tax, if you're lucky. This doesn't take a brainer to figure out what the hell's going on here, particularly if they're asking that they need a zoning revamp to get this. All you have to do is get this planning commission to do what they're supposed to do, and rezone it as a subdivision, and that'll take care of it. The other thing that kind of bothered me on here is when he, there was an article, part of it said, you know, "How many cars are going to be there?" I did, just did a wild-ass guess, and you can put 12,000 cars there, giving space for aisles and everything else, and it'll take you a year, at 66 cars a day, to fill that. Now, if this is a turnaround, what kind of turnaround is it? It's a junkyard. Let's look at it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak on this matter, or any matter at all, you can talk about anything you want. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Kenneth Spurlock, I live at 557...
And if you would sign in, you know, when you're done or before you're done. Thank you.
The form was taken by the previous gentleman in the suit. He picked up his papers accidentally.
So I live at 558 Bates Road. So here we are again, having this conversation. We're having this conversation because the company threatened to sue, and we, the people, got under given a special land use of the property without the consideration of Zone 2. So therefore, they can go on there and they can have this grand plan of just the auto auction, but once they're, they can actually cut the cars, they can sell them out the back, they can sell them out the front, and it doesn't matter. Because what they have is approval, the agreement that they can run in Zone 2, they have not met their criteria, they have not done a proper study, the EPA and the land and the water is damaged. This is something that's clear and apparent. I believe you all have understood this. I believe we've been here before. I believe this has been shot down. I don't think there's any difference in where we're at. This is, the people don't want, the environment doesn't want, this is something the township has had multiple rounds with, and now they're trying to come in and, I don't know how to say it, you know it, everybody knows it. Thank you.
Thank you. You take the pen, too?
I did not.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I'll grab it.
Please sign in, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Kathy Michalak. I live at 527221 Merrill Lake Drive in Chesterfield Township. The last meeting that I attended, you guys spent probably about 20 to 40 minutes on the kind that can be approved in the township, which I thought was very interesting. And you guys all were very plaintive, thought about it a lot, about what should be done or what shouldn't be done. And it doesn't seem like the weight of something that affects our environment and our township for years to come, without being able to just tear it off and put something else that's prettier up, is being thought of that heavily. And I just would appreciate that the same injustice would be felt for our land that there is for ugly brick.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak about anything? You have three minutes. Please sign in.
Hello, Frank DeBose, 28125 Hagan Road. Just want to thank you for all the time you guys put in here volunteering. I just agree with these people on everything they're saying, so I hope you vote no. Thank you.
Is there no pen up there?
Hi, Steve Collins, Bates Road, 5444. I wanted, sorry, I just walked in, kind of late to the meeting, but I want to voice my concern about that auto salvage auction yard, whatever you want to call it. It's very disheartening. I sent you guys all a letter. I never received an email except from one person, Brad Kirsten, that said, "Thank you for your concern." Not even to go F yourself, nothing. It bothers me. I pay a lot in taxes. Secondly, last week, while working on my property, getting ready to farm this year, I had a gentleman that owns a trucking business, walked up on the, he said, "Hey, you want to sell any property?" I said, "Sure, everything's for sale for the right price." I said, "There's four and a half acres right there I want to get rid of." He said, "Okay." Told me, "What do you want to do?" I said, "I don't know, you got to go to the township." He did his, walked in, went to planning. The first thing they did was pull out a map. He showed them the piece of land. They told them, "Don't waste your time. That's M1. Can't store anything there, no heavy equipment, no trucks in and out, no cars, no nothing." He says, "Are you sure?" They get somebody else. They come back. "Yep, don't waste your time, that's M1." He entertained the fact, "Can I get it rezoned?" They pushed him away, they chased him out. "What kind of investment do I have in this town that I can't make money? Somebody wants to buy a piece of property. I bought to invest, just like those guys down the road bought to invest with that auto auction, but you're allowing them to put an M2 business on an M1 property. You're still considering it. We know it's being considered. They've got attorneys, they'll threaten you with lawsuits. Us as residents are going to threaten you with a lawsuit. You're going to ruin our tax, our, our property values. My taxable income is only going to go up with you guys, right? Never goes down, so then I'm going to take you to the tribunal, and I'm going to fight." Secondly, where am I, keep going. None of these people live in Chesterfield. I grew up in this town. I had a, you invested, I did. These people don't care about your town, they don't care about the property, they don't care about any of the neighbors, they don't care about anything but one thing, money. I really hope you guys think with your hearts and not the pocketbooks of this township.
Please sign in, and you have three minutes.
My name's Sandra Linenbrink. I live at 56651 Bates Road. Looking at the paper that the lawyer put out about the noise with the trains, I don't hear the trains very often, maybe once a week. In the summertime, we hear them more because coyotes howl before the train goes through. So we'll hear all these coyotes, and then pretty soon we can hear a train, because you listen for it. What is a, what is these pieces of equipment that are going to be beeping eight hours a day, six days a week? Not going to bother any of us? I wouldn't want, I don't want to listen to that. I don't hear a train, so how, why do I want to hear this beeping eight hours a day? Thank you.
Please sign in, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Janice Young. I don't live on Bates Road or Hayden Road, but I live in the township, and I lived here for a long time. For two years, I spent a lot, a lot of my personal time trying to do good for the township, and I'm glad to see people show up. A lot of times, it's only what's in their backyard, which is what's happening here, but at least they're here to fight. They're fighting for their homes and their land and the value of them. I, I don't know a lot about real estate and... I don't know a lot about real estate and values. I did look up something. It's called economic obsolescence. I'll read to the definition of that. It's commercial real estate becomes economically obsolete when it loses value due to some external factors such as traffic pattern, change, construction noise, or the construction of an undesirable property. It seems to me that's what would happen to these homeowners, is that their property value is being affected by something external. You know, the railroad tracks, I'm pretty sure were there before the homes were built. So whatever noise was there, they knew about that. This is something that's coming in after the fact, so I think you really need to take that into consideration. And kind of on another note, you guys in the zoning board often say that you're volunteers, you don't, you know, you're just here, you know, doing the best for the township. Well, in my opinion, it's a privilege where you sit, and you are first line of defense at protecting our community and our homes and our values. So I'm asking you to please stand up and fight for this township and for the homeowners.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on anything? You have three minutes.
Christopher Perrick. I live in Chesterfield. I don't live near this, but I am resident of close to five years. This agenda item only in the past 168 pages that I'll, before you make a decision, have gone through that and understand, and are making decisions based on knowledge of what you learn with that. Have influence by. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak about anything? Item at all? If not, please sign in.
Nick Mazurik, 28057 Hagen Road. First of all, I'd like to thank you who have supported us against this IAA junkyard being built in our local community. A few months ago, petition development of the IAA Auto Auction Yard. I'm proud to say with all the support within Chesterfield, we now have over 861 signatures that don't want this junkyard. We also have caught the, in support of local Channel Seven Action News, which interviewed members of my family and local neighbors, which was aired on live TV, all against IAA Auto Auction. 861 Chesterfield citizens against this, including myself. This planning commission already denied their request once. I'm asking you, as a Chesterfield citizen, please hear the words of your people and support us once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? If not, the comments, and I'll move on to, there's no public hearings tonight, and we'll get into the regular agenda, and I'll have Rick LaBelle read the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A is Bates Road Development Company LLC. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A is Bates Roads Development Company LLC Site Plan 2024-19 Special Land Use M1 slash CJ. It's 153.09 acres east of Bates Road, north of 25 Mile Road. The public hearing was closed, and the decision was postponed back on 12/3 of 2024. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Back in December of last year, there was a public hearing meeting, and there was an opportunity for the applicant to make a presentation, an opportunity for the audience to respond and comment and ask questions. And so with that, I'm going to bring it back up to the board and entertain a motion unless there's a question or a comment from anybody up here. I will entertain a motion.
May I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
I'm Gary Gennarneck, the attorney for the petitioner. As you indicated, the public hearing was closed, but then tonight you let several members of the public speak on this issue. And let me finish, because my client does have procedural due process rights that I think Mr. Seabird would acknowledge. So since that December meeting, we gave you an updated report dated March 19th, 2025, and in conjunction with that, we submitted the traffic and the soil. So you have to take those consideration because the public hearing was closed. You indicated that it would be postponed for up to six meetings, and that we would have an opportunity to provide additional information.
Let me just step in for one. That did fail to mention that the information was submitted. Everybody on the board received the information. All those concerns meeting, so everybody's had a chance to. The thing is, with the audience, I said they could talk about anything, and they chose to talk about their particular procedurally. We follow the exactly the way it's written, and everybody had an opportunity. You could have come up in those three minutes yourself, chose not to, and.
Because I felt I would have an opportunity now, and I've been here many times over many years, and in the past, it's been my experience that the planning commission did not let people from the general public speak on the public comment section as to items that were previously part of a public hearing. And that's the reasons why I didn't speak at that point in time, and that's one of the reasons why I'm speaking now on behalf of my.
But if they couldn't have spoken on anything they wanted to, I would have probably suspended that topic, but it's they, they're allowed about anything they want. And so I was just following jurors, and was closed. Information was submitted. Everybody's received it, and this was postponed for tonight. Vote on it. And so that's kind of where we're at.
And then when you look at Giffords and Webster's report, the most recent one.
You know, Mr., Mr. Seabird, did you want to step in, or should we let this proceed? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
The, so the people that own those reports are here if you wanted to ask questions. The, and I believe what we've submitted in writing through that March 19th report and the supplemental reports that were contained therein meet the criteria for this special approval land use, because as you are aware, the property is zoned M1, but the consent judgment indicated that the property owners could use that property for items allowed or special approval land use in the M2 district, and that's what procedurally we've done. So we would ask that you approve this, and the only thing that I think that in our supplement we didn't address was the brick facade on the building. And clients are put a brick facade building, and we could probably do that administratively after you approved. And I don't think anyone submitted any professional report in contradiction to the reports submitted on March 19th, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Not sure, I don't have any questions if Mr. Seabird is okay. Come back to the board and carry on.
You know, unless, unless the commission members have any questions, I do know what procedural due process requirements are, and this process was set up so that in December of 2024, the applicant had a full and fair opportunity to make a presentation to the planning commission. They were not given any time constraints. They had as much lead time before that public hearing to submit documents that they wanted to submit to the commission, and it was the applicant that asked the commission to not make a decision, because the applicant asked the commission whether or not they would, the commission would afford the applicant an opportunity to supplement the record. You didn't have to do that. You could have, you could have ruled that night if you wanted to suspend your rules. So the applicant has had all the process that they're entitled to. The commission has now been given the additional supplemental materials. If commission members have a question regarding those materials, you're certainly free, and it would be fair to ask the applicant. But if you don't, it is totally unfair to a applicant not in, make a new presentation with public, no opportunity to respond. It is in effect giving them a second public hearing, which is not required, and it would be woefully unfair. So they have been given the process that the law affords them, and it's now up to the commission. If you have no questions of the applicant supplemental materials, it's time for you to vote.
Thank you. So with that, I'll just bring it back to, if anybody on the board has a question, we can entertain it. If not, prepare to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, barring, I'd like to make a motion. With respect to the Bates Road Development Company LLC Special Land Use Application, after considering the applicant's formal request for special land use at the subject Bates Road location, after reviewing Gifford Webster's reports dated November 1, 2024, and November 26, 2024, after listening to the public hearing on December 12, 2024, comments from both the applicant and multiple Chesterfield Township residents, as well as thoroughly reviewing the 2025 submission from the Sharp Law Firm with commentary from Mr. Gary Gendemalik, or Gendonalek, sorry, directed to this commission, included attachments that traffic impacted by Fleis and Vanderbrink dated 1925, and the subsurface investigation report by McDowell and Associates dated 3/11/25. After thoroughly reviewed all of this information, I move that the application special land use for the following reasons. Section 6.1 of the zoning ordinance provides that the planning commission shall review each special land use and must find affirmatively with respect to each of the standards set forth in Section 6.2.2b if the proposed special land use is to be approved. Section 6.2.2b of the zoning ordinance with eight specific land use standards, which the applicant is required to satisfy as condition of the approval. I will address each of those standards as they relate to the applicant's request. Standard one, the proposed use shall be of such location, size, and character that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood and applicable regulations of the zoning district in which it is to be located. The proposed development not be in harmony with zoning to the West Road, which is agricultural and residential. The area is also of residential land uses and homes. The substantial increase in related traffic, volume, noise, site sounds that would be related to the proposed development will not be in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. In my opinion, the applicant does not satisfy standard number one. On page three of the appraisal, I'm sorry, of the applicant's 31925 letter to this commission, the applicant does state that in all probability, facility noise will not exceed 75 decibels. However, the commission, as it typically stands, we rely on facts and data, and I did not see any of that with. Standard two, the proposed use shall be of nature, shall be of a nature vehicular and pedestrian, no more than is normal for the involved, taking into consideration vehicular movements and related routes of traffic, proximity and relationship to intersections, adequacy of site distances, locations, and access of off-street parking and provisions for pedestrian traffic, with particular attention to minimizing pedestrian vehicle conflicts. The applicant has represented that the vehicular traffic on the site will be limited to a few employees' vehicles and car trailer traffic. The applicant suggests that approximately 15 employees will be on site during business hours. Roughly 89 acres are planned for storage of vehicles, which would permit approximately 13,439 vehicles on site at any given time. The applicant has indicated that the turnover for auction inventory is approximately every two to three months. The potential for traffic given the inventory turnover is approximately 13,000 vehicles every eight. Towing vehicles in and out of the, causes a significant increase in traffic along Grasshut Avenue, 25 Mile, 26 Mile, as well as Bates Road. By excluding the impact of the auto auction facility itself from the study, if you were the second report, page two, section two, the impact on local roads and traffic flow and thus resident safety is not addressed adequately. The applicant has failed to satisfy this requirement that the proposed use shall be of nature, shall be of a nature that will make vehicular more hazardous for the district involved. Standard three, the proposed use shall be designed as to the location, size, intensity, site layout, and periods of operation of any, of any such proposed use to eliminate any possible nuisance emanating therefore, therefrom, which might be noxious to the occupants or any other nearby uses permitted, whether by reason of dust, noise, fumes, vibration, smoke, or lights. With the moving, storage, administration of sales and disposal of 89 acres of vehicles, which require the use of heavy machinery, the addition of significant intersectional traffic, and it keeps going, excuse me, one moment, related road traffic, on-site traffic, these activities by their nature create a potential for dust, noise, fumes, vibration, smoke, and lights. There are several studies, but there is no noise, vibration, and harshness report provided. The applicant fails to address these potential adverse impacts on the proposed development. Standard four, the proposed use shall be of, should be such that the proposed location and height of buildings or structures and locations, nature and height of walls, fences, and landscaping will not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings or unreasonably affect their value. The applicant failed to provide any evidence that the proposed use will not interfere or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings that unreasonably affect the value. We failed to find any credible evidence, including appraisals, that the surrounding properties will not be affected accordingly. Do not believe the standard has been met. Standard five, the proposed use shall relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of adjacent land uses as regard, as regards prevailing habits, access by perspective patrons, continuity of development, and need for services, facilities, and specified areas of the township. Proposed use does not relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of the adjacent land uses in the area. The application has failed to demonstrate that the traffic that will be generated by the proposed use will relate harmoniously with the adjacent land uses. Standard six, proposed use is necessary for public convenience at the proposed location. The proposed, the proposed use does not relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of the adjacent land use in the area. The applicant has failed to demonstrate that the traffic which will be generated by the proposed use will relate harmoniously with adjacent land uses. Although I do not believe that this special land use standard is intended for the planning commission to determine whether there is a market need for the proposed use, the standard clearly requires the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed land use is an appropriate use of the, at the proposed location. In this case, the applicant proposes to utilize 89 acres, which will have the potential to store over 13,000 vehicles at any given time, which are completely taken off-site and replenished with new inventory every two to three months. The proposal will have an added effect on surrounding land uses and will substantially increase traffic on existing roads that were not designed for this type of traffic. Do not appear that the standard has been met. Standard seven, the proposed use is so designed, located, planned, and to be operated that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. The applicant has offered no evidence that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected if the proposed development is approved. Specifically, the applicant has failed to provide any data regarding traffic hazards and related safety concerns, noise hazards, including vibration and related concerns, potential ground contamination related to the large numbers of damaged and stored vehicles, and related effects to the underground water and the potential adverse effects of electric vehicle battery storage and fire concerns. And standard eight, the proposed use shall not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the vicinity in which it is to be located, and will not be detrimental to existing and/or other permitted land uses in the zoning district. The applicant has offered no data addressing the impact on the proposed development of the value of surrounding land uses. The applicant represented to the commission that it operates a number of these uses similar to the proposed special land use throughout the country, yet has not produced any credible evidence, including real estate appraisals, that the proposed development will not be detrimental to the existing or other permitted land uses in the district. For these reasons, I believe standard eight has not been met either. Section 6.2.2b of the zoning ordinance sets forth eight specific land standards, which the applicant is required to satisfy as a condition of approval. The applicant, all eight, as were just listed. Since none of the eight appear to have been met, I move that we, that we. Since none of the eight appear to have been met, I move that we that we decline the application of special land use.
Okay. All supported, Mr. Chair. I had a motion by Mark Renaud, supported by Rick Lebel. To deny petition number twenty twenty four dash one nine, as stated in the motion. I do have a question myself. Were all eight states addressed in the motion?
Yes, listed or listed and addressed.
So with that, I'm gonna take a roll in this. I'll start with Ralph Jures. Sure?
It's not required. I just, point of clarification, the motion included something not complying with all that, correct? And then, but even just one, that one that didn't comply, that would still be a reason to deny.
Right, but I wanted to make sure that there's eight.
I thoroughly.
Eight things there and if he if he addressed them all as he wanted to.
And my question was just more a matter of educating. That's all.
Okay.
All right, and so we would need to, if we concur, we need to vote yes, correct?
Right, so if you're in favor of denying the petition, then you would vote nay.
No, the the motion that was made was to deny the applicant's special land use request. There was a second. If, as you take the roll, an I vote is to agree with the motion and deny the special land use.
Thank you for the clarity. So with that, so Mr. Wersky and how you're voting.
Aye.
Kathy Bosberg?
Aye.
Eric Hyder?
Aye.
Brian Carr?
Aye.
Aye.
James and Rick Lebel?
Aye.
And Carl Leonard votes aye. So with that being said, it's deny, vote of eight zero. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will now go on to item B and Rick.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item B is Watermark Church Site Plan twenty twenty five dash zero. It is zoned R one A, it's seven point five acres northeast corner of Washington Street and Baker Road. The parcel ID is one five dash zero nine dash one one dash two five two dash zero one zero. The address is fifty four two zero five Washington Street. Ms. Osborne?
There we are. Okay, thank you for your patience.
Okay, we're just blinking again.
Okay, I think we're good now. In your packet, there is a memo dated March eighteenth on this site application. The application is for a building addition and additional parking to an existing church. Places of worship are permitted in the R one A district where this is located as a special land use. The use has been granted that special land use approval back in nineteen ninety two contingent on two variances. One related to the setback on Washington and then related to building materials, the use of T one eleven siding in place of the required brick. And at that time, both variances were granted. So tonight, the planning commission is tasked with reviewing the site plan and determining if it meets all the ordinance requirements. I'll note that the planning commission may request the applicant to undergo special land use approval. In conjunction with the proposed changes in this application if they feel that is warranted. Moving on to page two of our memo, provides the site background. There the parcel is located right next to New Baltimore and there's no access onto Washington Street. It's all from Baker. The proposed, the proposal is a nine thousand nine hundred and twenty foot addition, which would make the building eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. And it would be one hundred and twenty five parking spaces for the entire building. The addition is going to include a sage room, storage area, a sanctuary, storage and office area, restrooms, gathering area, I guess. The bottom of page two, we move into the dimensional requirements. Again, as I noted, places of worship are special land uses in this district. And so the planning commission may wish to have the applicant provide a special land use application if they feel it's warranted with the changes that are proposed. The the proposal is compliant with pretty much all the development standards. With the exception of the building height, I think we probably just need to confirm the the midpoint. The the measurement as defined in the ordinance so that can be done administratively. On page four, we move into the site requirements and the site standards. You'll probably, you have probably noticed that the building materials are what was used for the, or excuse me, the building materials do not specify the type of materials used for the building surface. But it appears that they might be using the same materials that were used in the rest of the building. So just based on the style, that's what we're we're assuming here. So again, the applicant did receive a variance for this material back in nineteen ninety two. But that's something that the planning commission may wish to ask them to bring into conformance with the current standards. No screenings required, no replacement trees are required. The site does have existing landscaping and is proposing to add additional landscaping. And in terms of parking lot landscaping, they are adding the thirteen required parking lot trees. I did have a note that the applicant needed to confirm whether or not irrigation would be required, would be provided. I'll note that that's not a requirement. It's it's just needs to be noted if it will be provided. The frontage landscaping, they are deficient. Two trees, one on each frontage, one on Baker and one on Washington. And that's something that can be reviewed administratively. For lighting, they're proposing a total of eleven light fixtures located on the building. These lights do provide over illumination, so that will need to be addressed. And the applicant did note in their response letter to this memo that they would meet the standards, the township standards, and that can be reviewed administratively. One area that the planning commission may wish to discuss with the applicant is about vehicular parking. There's on this, on the floor plan, there's an area labeled as worship and another labeled as sanctuary. And it's unclear in the plans how the the required parking was determined. So they just needed, there might be, it might be worth discussion about how many seats are in each of the spaces. And then clarification about what the existing sanctuary will be used as is the response letter. So that it's gonna be used for a a different use or will no longer hold the same use. So that's on parking. At the bottom, excuse me, the top of page six, I note that they're deficient in bicycle parking spaces. So they'll need to provide those. And then another note for the planning commission is loading and unloading areas. The site and you may wish to discuss if they need them with the new expansion. And then finally, in terms of sidewalks, I did know that the sidewalks were compliant, but it was right to my attention. The sidewalk should be extended the full length of the lot to, you know, go the whole frontage. I think that completes my review. Everything else that I just kind of threw. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, with that, I'll go to the applicant and have you come up and speak.
Do I need to sign in? Everybody needs to sign in or? I will.
Do they need to sign in? Yes, yes, please.
My name is Lauren Whitworth. I'm the lead pastor at Watermark Church. And, you know, our church has been in this community for over thirty years. I've been here about sixteen years. And, you know, for us, this conversation of an addition has been a conversation for about fourteen years. And over those fourteen years, we've maximized our space as much as we can. We've done everything that we can to continue to do the kind of ministry that we feel called to. But we feel like we've finally reached the point where we have just an opportunity to move forward with this addition that will allow us to to worship with the number of people that we're we're getting on a Sunday morning and also to be able to do the kind of ministry they want to do on a regular basis. You know, for us, we've, over the years, continued to serve our community and meet the needs of the community around us. And I've told our congregation that, yeah, we want to use this for worship on Sunday morning for the ministries that we've got. But if this addition isn't used for our community and not used on a regular basis for people outside the walls of our church, then it's it's not a good use of our funding. And so we see it as an opportunity for us to just continue what we've been a part of and been doing over all these years. And so at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to the people that can answer your questions with Orchard Construction and P E A, as well Derek Jerome, he's our worship leader. He's been involved in the building process.
Commission, my name is Steve, co-owner of Orchard Construction. We are the contractors of the project. My brother Chad Nichol is here on on our behalf as well, too. And we have John from P E A Engineering. I brought some samples of the exterior facade. If you guys want any of them to take a look at, I can certainly walk up there and hand them to you if you'd like to take a look at it. As well as answer any other questions. I think there might have been a couple about the building itself. If you need any discussion, I'd be more than happy to explain what you guys are looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I bring it back to the board, is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak on this? If not, I'll bring it back to the board. Wersky?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Fosberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, some of the issues that were just recited before this. Has your organization addressed them or plan to in the, such as extending the sidewalk to the corner? Some other issues in here. I have a question about the building material. Is that what you're, a sample of what you are going to?
Yes, ma'am, correct. Do you want to see it?
Yes.
Okay.
The, some of these people do, yeah.
Okay. Is it okay to bring it? Are you gonna? So I'll explain. This is going to be the cap that is gonna go on top of the brick that we've got. Also, this sample board here is of the brick facade that's gonna be used and then the sill cap is gonna be sitting on top of that. And then we have a new product that we're introducing. This is a, instead of a board and batten that's done out of wood or vinyl. It is now gonna be, it looks like wood, but it is actually metal that's gonna be fastened to the exterior of the building. And then we've also got a metal roof. It's gonna be similar to the look of the existing building. It is all metal currently. But we're gonna be adding some more characteristics to it and that's why we brought these here. Just be careful, these edges are sharp. And we and we did talk about the sidewalk that we would be extending that to the edges of the the property. That wouldn't be an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll let the others ask questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hyder?
Has the church grown in the last fifteen years since you've been on?
Yeah, when I arrived about sixteen years ago, we were under about thirty and right now we're averaging about three hundred and fifty.
In the next five years, do you think you'll be growing again?
I think the day one, this building is open, it'll increase by a hundred, hundred and fifty people on a regular basis.
This will support your your future expansions?
As far as people.
The growth.
It will up to a point.
You know, in the next five years.
Yeah.
Where you're gonna come back and we need to, you know, we need to expand the addition again.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, I hope we continue to.
Something which is a good problem.
Yes.
You want your congregation to grow.
Yeah, I mean, right, three services on the same thing. Plan would be go back to two services. But, you know, we're good at three at this point. So if we had to, you know, we'll maximize the space for as long as we can. I don't see us turning around and saying, hey, let's spend another three, four million dollars just to add some more space right away.
Great, thank you.
Y'all set?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Carr?
Push it a couple times. All right. So, I mean, overall, you know, I understood the expansion and I think it's great that you got growth in your church. So I think that's all great stuff. But just trying to understand, I did, you know, find it interesting because I had similar questions to the Giffords and Webster's in regards to just again. Understanding the space and that's an assembly space. So, you know, my experience in assembly spaces, you know, that defines parking. Defines the size of your toilet rooms, designs the number of egresses and the size of those egresses and and I I didn't, you know, obviously you don't have that information on here. So what, because at the end of the day. Without having the seat assignments that you have in here, it then goes off of square footage because you can get extra people within a square footage. So what is that? So what is the, what is the total number of people that can be in your church? I would like to understand that because it does define, again, the appropriate number of parking spaces. Architecturally, I guess I care about the number, but when I add up the number of bathrooms, you know, fifty, you know, I think it's like fifty or stall. You add up the number of stalls, you're getting like five hundred people you can get in here. So, you know, from our perspective, from a site plan perspective, you know, I do need to understand, or at least I'd like to understand. You know, to make sure you do have the adequate number of parking spaces associated with, because what I don't happen is you have a building size that from an assembly perspective can handle up to four hundred people, but you only have parking for three hundred people. And if it continues to grow, all sudden on major overflow parking, not a street. We we have to, from a site plan perspective, we need to understand that. Like, you gotta define that for me. So what is the, what is the, what was the number of?
What was the magical?
Yeah, what was your magical number when you designed it?
Yeah, good question. So we do have, and he's not here tonight, we have a engineer besides P E A that did the civil site. But for the actual structure, that was reviewed by Mark, Mark Simpson. They've reviewed it, looked at it. Now, we have not submitted building plans to the building department, but it does, he has reviewed it. He has put a seal on the drawing, looking at it, that it is adequate for on the three seventy five that's gonna be inside the building. It is fire suppressed. There is also gonna be adequate bathroom and then he's also reviewed the parking. That there's adequate parking based upon the numbers that have been submitted.
Yeah, no, I saw that, but, I mean, you understand, you know what I'm talking about, like, without having the number of, without having the number of the seats within your auditorium. So that's everything blank, which means it then goes by a square footage calculation of the number of people you can get within it, within an assembly space. And I I didn't take to do that because I didn't have the time to, you know, get that detailed. That's what I ask you. Is that, because, you know, again, if you take, because now we have to look at this as one building because the buildings are, it's really one building now because they're attached, right? So you you have the original congregation space. Now you got the new congregation space.
But they are separated with, there is a fire separation between the buildings.
But your parking and everything is based off of now one building. You can get, you can fill both those spaces up. And so what you're trying to say is it's three hundred and seventy five people between both buildings is max.
Corrected. That was the number. And again, he had reviewed that, putting that forward, that there was adequate parking, adequate bathrooms. Based upon that, if we needed, I would have submitted that to you guys if you needed architectural plans to outside. to outside of the elevations. We just submitted what was requested, but we can tell you that that's what would end up being, would be the numbers, three seventy-five.
Okay.
That would be inside there.
There'd be a difference between, like, in an assembly, if there's fixed pews, chairs, and standing space. Because if you take the chairs out, the standing space can hold a lot more occupants. So is there actually chairs, pews?
Yeah, so we currently operate with chairs, and our new space will also operate with chairs. In fact, actually, the chairs that are in our current worship space are going to be utilized in the new worship space. We're just going to be purchasing more of them to either mirror similar to what we have. But yeah, so kind of, we have, and in fact, our building gets used often for other things than our Sunday morning gathering on a regular basis right now with the way our room is currently set up, our old worship space. All the chairs get stacked inside or put in storage spaces. So that's where...
So on an average, it's your congregation?
So, in relation to our new worship space?
Existing and then to the new.
So right now, I would say our adult average count on a weekly basis, where in your referencing chairs in a worship space, probably between our three services, it's about two hundred and forty.
Is that total or is that per service?
That's total for all three.
Okay, so you'd separate, you'd divide two, like I said, you'd divide by three? On an average?
So, I could tell you, our first service is a little lighter.
Yeah.
Service is the most heavily attended, and then our second, our third service is kind of in between.
That's what we're concerned about because the chairs in relation to the parking are kind of two different things.
Sure.
So these are the materials we're going to, the stone products with the metal siding. Currently, it's a painted, it's a painted T one eleven, correct?
Correct, yep.
So...
There is stone, I shouldn't say it's not all T one eleven. On two of the four, so the Washington and Baker frontage, the lower half of the building is currently covered with some type of like a stone, large veneer stone.
Can I step in for a minute? The, came up as painted. When I went out there, it looked like it had metal siding on the upper part of the existing building.
Correct, the upper part, yes.
But, and then on the bottom, there was stone in the front. I didn't look around the other sides.
The other sides are all painted metal. So two of the four.
It's all metal now, it's not, so it's not wood?
No, it's all, yeah, it's all metal.
So what you're doing now is metal, it's a different color than what's existing?
Correct.
Is it going to stay that way, that you're going to have two separate color schemes on the two buildings?
Our goal would be, from a budget perspective, to be able to make it the same color from a unification, because we don't necessarily love the color variance. But yeah, the goal would be that we are going to have, and I'm pretty sure we can comfortably make it fit within that.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify the painted wood. Sorry.
No, you're okay. Yeah, because, you know, my point is, I mean, the colors, they, you know, I mean, obviously it's your choice. I, I think they're aesthetically, they're pleasing. I don't have an issue with it. My question was more going back to, you know, our ordinance does require brick or better. I would say this is an equivalent product to that at all.
I would disagree with that because this is an accepted brick veneer, that is.
No, no, this is...
But we're doing, so you were given a site plan, also elevations. It shows the brick that we're going up higher. We're meeting the standard that was required going across the front.
That you're, our standard, what did you say?
Well, we're not doing a wainscot where you're only going three feet high. We're doing the front face is going to be brick.
Mine just shows the wainscot. That was kind of my point. I just see a wainscot on mine.
The drawing we have doesn't show it all.
I don't know what you're talking about. So that was, is that...
I apologize.
Front elevation is to, you know, at a minimum, you know, again, we're, you know, I mean, I, you know, obviously everyone has their own vote. I mean, from my perspective, though, I think elevation, which is made up of the street, needs to have more of the facade.
As you're talking, I'm going through, looking at my emails, because I apologize, I believe that that, there was an error.
I don't get emails, I get...
No, no, me, I'm looking at my emails as you're talking to me?
Yeah.
To try to verify, because I know that we had more brick on that front.
Yeah, and that's all, and that's all my comment is, is I think at a minimum, again, whoever does the motion or whatever the group decides to do, but I think that that front facade needs to have more of the masonry finish. And then, you know, I can be flexible on the other sides. And then the only last thing that I just wanted to comment on was, and you can run this by your architect. Big into safety and I'm big into, doors always swing in the direction of egress in regards to safe havens, right? Never have a door that opens counter to where people would be, if there's ever an emergency. Look at your, like, I would call it the east side. You know, you got two doors there and they swing like this, right? But everybody is going to run out of that building, go left to the front parking lot to get the, you know, to get out, right? In case there's an emergency and that, the door that's further to the north swings in the opposite of that egress. So I, so I think you should look at that. And then, you know, the, I would just, the only other thing I have is like, then you have doors that open up into just grassy areas in the center between the two buildings, which again, if you got three hundred people in the fire or there's a, I mean, I hate to say it, yeah, shooting, I mean, I'm just saying, run. And you got people running, running into wall, like, running out and then they're like, where are they going to go, right? I mean, I don't know, to me, I know, you know, designing these things in the past, you know, architect, I always looked at the, the flow of grass. And again, from a planning perspective, there's certainly not much I can do, but I can't just share my opinion because I think it should be looked at because it's a real thing now, you know, I mean, it's a real thing, right? I mean...
The, maybe to help with that, the fire marshal has reviewed this?
You know.
And have no concerns because the doors that are supplied here are all outswing? They are all commercial?
Yeah, well, they'll just look that they're swinging out and they'll look at that you have the correct amount of access. But they don't, a lot of people don't look at the flow of the, of the traffic of people moving because they just look at the quantity and the number of doors, that's all. But it just, again, sharing just my thoughts because the couple of the...
Why would the fire marshal not look at that, though? Why would he not have concern or raise?
It'll just get you out of the building, you know, I mean, it's just, it's, they're, again, they're looking at the number of doors and, you know, making sure you have, you know, the, the number of the assembly, that's all. Not really like, you know, against the direction. But again, you don't have to do anything with that. I'm not, that's not a planning thing. That was just...
No, but if it came up as a vote, I just wanted to just make sure that you felt comfortable with that this was addressed.
Well, I mean, I just know, in my past life, you know, when I was a designer, that is something that we always, you know, just make sure. Because again, it's the direction of traffic that people are going to go in. I mean, it's, we're human nature, right? So, running out of that phase one addition, they're naturally run to the parking lot, probably where their car is. And anyone, you know, running down there, all of a sudden, you got a door, you know. In this case, they got to run and there's a door that's going to be in front of them. That's all, you just kind of go in the flow of the direction. But, but yeah, that was just, you know, that was just my other thought. But other than that, that's it. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you. Mr. Renaud?
Yeah, the, actually, the only thing I really wanted to touch on was the front facade that Mr. Carr already touched on with it, that with our, if you're not familiar, it's section five point four A, which talks about the requirement of brick or better for that front facade. So I'll wait to hear the response on that.
Y'all set? Mr. Klimowski?
Yeah, the, what, what do you, what provisions do you have for your loading area? Do you have a loading area or how does that figure in?
We don't currently have area, and I guess the, the question in response to some of that would be, I guess, what would permit a need for loading area? Because we aren't doing anything, I guess, I'm the loading area because I'm the one that moves all the chairs, all the stuff in the building. So I don't, that and a single, single chair dolly, I don't know how much more else we load in and out of that space. And so I couldn't, like I said, I couldn't necessarily answer the question more, so just don't know what would warrant. Just because again, what we do on a regular basis is pretty low key and small scale when it comes to, we're not bringing cars in and out of the building, or we're not bringing large things in and out of the space or moving things around, I guess, so.
Yeah, food delivery, do you?
We don't have any food delivery, except for Little Caesar's on Wednesday nights when our students meet. That's about it. So, yeah, there's no food delivery or, and like, and even when it comes to like stuff that we purchase for church use, whether it's supplies or whatever, that's all through Amazon and it gets delivered to mine or our lead pastor's house. So we don't, we, because we don't typically work out of the church on a regular, from an office perspective, from a delivery perspective, most stuff comes to our homes.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Mr. LeBelle? Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, and I apologize. We do have the wrong email that we submitted. There's quite a bit more brick facade, if I may present this. Especially if Mr. Carr or Mr. Renaud have a...
Unless we just pass the phone around real quick. I, you know, I don't know if we need to see it. It's probably going to be addressed as to how much...
It, it covers basically the whole front from the ground all the way up to the peak, as well as it makes a turn around. There's quite a bit more. I'm not sure how it...
Are the returns on the side going to be all the way up, too?
Yeah, and that's, if you want to take, like, in more than happy hand, it's a...
If everybody wants to see it, I guess we could do that.
I apologize for that. I'm not sure how that got crisscrossed.
I think if we look at the elevation and say that the whole front is going to be all stone and the left and the right side returns as showing on the drawings is going to be the same, then visually, it'd be nice to see, but I don't, for me, it's not necessary.
Okay.
As long as we know that that is the intent, then the board can address it.
I think he's going to have the email.
Does it, is that even possible? Is that something we can do or no? I mean, you know, while we're, Mr. LeBelle's talking, yeah. Yeah, if we can do that, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, we'll see what the board's, at least in my opinion. If we have a lot of issues, I'm not prepared to approve or disapprove this evening because it sounds like we may have some other questions that need to be addressed. But we'll see what, what the board has to, has to say. There was the question of the, the building height, the building height. And in your response letter, you had mentioned that it was on certain pages of a drawing. We couldn't find that. I couldn't find that information. Can you help me as to where I would find that information? Is this on, is that on the new drawings that we don't have? It is on there?
Yeah. It was in there on the elevation. It was a, just under thirty-five feet on the overall and twenty-eight feet to the midpoint.
Well, I see it now. I apologize. It is there. Okay.
It worked. Because Stephanie, isn't our, our ordinance is thirty-five feet, correct?
Thirty-five feet maximum, yes.
But is that measurement taken from the exterior grade? Or is it measured from the first floor?
It should be from finished floor height.
Sorry, the maximum height is twenty-eight feet, not thirty-five. And it should be measured to the midpoint. So previously, what I was seeing was to the highest point of the ridge.
Yeah, no, but are you taking it from the exterior grade or do you take it from the first floor? So first, my experience is taken from the exterior grade because that's the height that the public sees, right?
Correct.
You know, because you can have a first floor that's, say, two feet high and you got to do two steps to get in. But you can only, it still can only be twenty-eight from the exterior. Their measurement is from the first floor, which is, you know, maybe a six or eight inch variance, I don't know. So it's technically higher than thirty-five feet. So I just don't know what the ordinance is for that zone. I can't recall it, but twenty-eight feet.
I'm looking at the...
The drawing shows that it's from top of floor, first floor. And it goes up, it's thirty-four feet, one and eleven sixteenths. So it's just short of thirty-four foot, two inches to the peak, twenty-eight feet to the midpoint.
So what I'm looking at is up to the overhang, it's got twenty. And if you split the roof in half, it's another fourteen feet, one inch. So take seven feet, you got twenty-seven feet roughly. And then if you got a foot below, down to the grade, they're like right there if it, if it all plays out that way. I'm just looking at the one elevation, too. That shows...
Twenty-seven one, yeah. Twenty-seven one, to be exact.
So as long as it adds up and it doesn't exceed the twenty-eight feet, then it looks like it might be good.
But is it twenty-eight feet to the top or twenty-eight to the mid?
I'm looking at it off the ground. Yeah, to the mid. But that's, but are you including the one foot, if it's a foot, down to the grade? Because there's a gap between the hatch mark and the ground, which there might be another foot there. So if you got twenty and seven and a few inches, and that's a foot, it might be eight inches, I don't know. You might be a little over that twenty-eight midpoint. If you go right down to the grade. Because everything's off the ground.
I apologize. I'm reviewing the definition of building height once again.
Twenty-seven foot, half inches, what it comes out to.
To answer your question, Mr. Carr, it's, it's not from grade and it's not from the first floor. It's the vertical distance from the, it's the average elevation of the street curb paralleling the front. Or in this case, since it's on a street corner at the front and the side of the building. So we need the average of the curb at that, of those two streets.
Which we met that based upon...
I'm sorry.
Which we've met that based upon these numbers.
That's a flat ass, that's a flat ass. Yeah, their site's pretty flat, so, I mean...
So I guess what we can do if they're having a motion, is to make it, are the motions, whatever, sorry.
Whatever it needs to be, that it's part of the motion and it goes from the ground, I'm sorry, goes from the grade.
It's the, the average grade, maybe say the average grade of the...
Which everything looks flat, so. We'll just put it as part of the motion and then administratively, they can make sure that you don't exceed the twenty-eight feet.
Sure, and we, and the building department would certainly also be reviewing the drawings, confirming that we make sure that we...
We're going to make it part of the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. LeBelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So now that I've muddied those waters, let's talk about the over illumination. In your narrative, you had said that it would be addressed in a drawing. Where are we at with that?
So what we did was we sent this out to get a photometric, which was not required at the time, but we wanted to submit it. So in case that there, we've been involved with other municipalities that some have requested, some haven't, we sent this out there. The photometric was so that each exterior door was going to have a downward facing LED light. That's what we had proposed. I'm not sure why that they had come back with saying that it was overpowering unless we had too strong of a illumination. But we were going to address that by making sure they still are going to stay downward. They are LED, but they would meet the criteria in terms of the wattage that would be allowed for each of those doors.
And that's what you need to demonstrate to us, is it appears that the lighting is too intense at certain areas that you're illuminating. So that needs to be addressed.
Are you, would you like a different photometric plan?
Well, that'd be great if you have a photometric that's showing exactly what the intensity is.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we just respond, and I apologize, Mr. LeBelle, that's what we had responded to in the response they had asked us this Sunday. And we did say that we would address that in our response letter.
Yeah, that you would, that you would address it, which we need to address it.
Okay.
Okay, great. Irrigation, on your, on your response letter, it was, it was vague as to what you're going to do with irrigation. Where are we at with that? Our ordinance does require irrigation. It's six point one C eight in our ordinance requiring irrigation for your plantings. I can read you your response if you want, or you can just tell me what you're going to, how are you going to respond to that? What are you going to do?
Well, I would turn that over to the civil engineer on the, or did you?
Currently, there is no irrigation, and I believe Derek's going to tell you that they do not plan that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any irrigation on site currently for any of our landscaping. We don't really have a whole lot of landscaping. There's a few... We don't really have a whole lot of landscaping. There's a few hostas along the front of the building and two little plants outside the front door. So, we don't have intentions of being, I guess massively elaborate with everything that we're going to do from a landscaping perspective because we don't have in a budget to pay someone to maintain said land. Like I said, I mentioned that I'm the, I'm the unloading and loading guy. Like, I'm also that guy that trims the bushes too. So, when it comes to anything that's required from a irrigation system for any new... You know, we, we have no intention of trying to get around it. It's just if it's required, then absolutely we will rules and do it. If it's not based on our current standing of not having it, that would be preferred, so.
I, I don't believe that the ordinance does require, if it's provided that it needs to be on the plan, but we can double check that just to verify before anything's approved or not, but...
So, it's gray area right now?
I'm pretty sure that the ordinance does not say that it's required. It just says that if irrigation's provided on the plan.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Bicycle parking. Is it depicted on the drawing as to where you're going to have your bicycle parked?
I don't believe that we did.
No bicycle parking's not shown currently, but I believe the applicant has said imply that was the point of response.
Okay.
So, there was a little bit of debate on exactly what...
We were, part of it was, I wasn't sure if it was something where bicycle parking meant we could have racks of bicycles on exterior of building, if it required a dedicated space in the parking lot itself. You know, I, we weren't necessarily sure what that requirement was, but if, again, same thing. Like, we're not trying to say that it won't. It's just where and how it's required, exactly how it would be portrayed. Similar to how we would provide a document to show that we're going to reduce the order in certain spaces. We'll say, hey, this is a designated spot for, I think it's nine bicycle parking spaces is what's being requested based on the parking lot size or... So, again, it's more, is that, does that mean like nine slot? I don't, I guess I've never really paid attention from a building perspective what a bicycle parking spot is or if it's literally just a rack with slots. Like, I know my daughter's elementary school, Ashley Elementary, they have just these like cement blocks with like little slats that bikes just set in. You know, if that's a par, bicycle parking spot, then that's a bicycle. But if it's something that's more dedicated, we, the response was we'll do it as required and again, kind of looking for clarity of what that might be.
The reason I, is typically this, at this board and Mr. Carr will ask to this is, is we like to look at where the bike rack is at and can a bicyclist safely get to the bike rack? And so, that's the reason I'm asking where, if bicycle rack, the residents are safe getting to the bike rack.
Sure.
So, there was a reason for that.
So, if a bike rack is sufficient.
I would like to see on the drawing where the bike rack is going to go.
Okay.
And there is a, an amount of bikes, bike spots required per ordinance. Um, there's a DTE transformer out front of the building. You're putting a parking lot in close proximity. Any talk or thought about bollards around that so that a...
Of what, around it? I'm sorry.
The bollards around it?
Bollards near it because the electrical industry is my background and I can cite two instances where an elderly person took out a transformer because there wasn't any bollards. Just something to look at.
Okay.
If you would, please. Again, the board's pleasure, if you want to wait and have an updated drawing or if, you know, you feel comfortable handling all the, handling this information administratively.
Yeah, I, if you're all set, I've got a couple of things and then we can decide if there's too many issues that we need to address, where we need to see a fresh drawing with all this stuff handled. My, my concern, the question kind of agrees with Ryan Carr and about the door swinging out for a fire situation. Up in Calumet, there's an old playhouse there. And on the second floor, there, it was a big open room and they used to have, this is going way back when the copper mining was, you know, a big thing up there. And it was, there were cities and people and villages and there's a lot of people. So, they, they had a bunch of people with kids celebrating a Christmas party upstairs. And I don't know how many people were there, but there was a set of stairs, wide set of stairs that went down to a double door to exit the building. And what happened is somebody yelled "fire". There were some problems up there. Somebody yelled "fire". They all piled down the stairs and when they hit those doors, the people just backed up. And I don't know how many perished, but it was a horrible situation that happened way back then. We were up there and we saw the history of all the town. So, I think that's where, you know, he's making that point that if you've got a hundred people running for a door that only opens in and they all start piling up and backing up, it kind of makes sense that the outswinging door, if it's not an issue to do that, would be there so people could escape if there was some matter that happened, so.
May I ask where you guys are seeing the indoor?
Outswinging, so...
Yeah, everything we have is outswing.
It's outswinging. It was just the outswing, that's all.
I'm sorry, I thought you were saying you were...
Everything, everything that we have is all outswing because it is commercial, requires that. And again, I will, very, the fire marshal reviewed this and said that this property, business is listed above, was found to be in compliance with fire codes and regulations set forth by Chesterfield Township Fire Department. Again, I understand you guys. I'm on the planning commission myself. We have to do the due diligence and safety and health well-being. However, the fire marshal has also reviewed it on behalf stating that he, he's the one that's going to be coming out doing the review on the property and if he, he's already seen this.
I don't think Mr. Carr was making a requirement. It was a suggestion based on what he was looking at. And I heard something different with the door swing, so, however it shakes out, I think it's... As long as it's approved by the fire marshal, then we might, we're probably not going to push that. That's all I had, just that, that story about that.
Mr. Chair, I'd forgotten to ask a question. There was also the sidewalk along Baker. Your drawing depicts the sidewalk stopping at a dash approximately where a dash line comes across from the corner of the, the new addition.
And we said we were going to take that out. You might not, we were going to take it out to the property lines.
Yeah, it needs to come south to the property line.
Yeah, on both sides. It was going to go out.
Because all the properties are combined now, so then the sidewalks should go along all the frontages.
My last question is, is what can we do? In fact, I saw the pastor one afternoon when they were working on the bridge. Is there a chance we can get a sidewalk to tie to New Baltimore in front of that other piece of property next door? It's not a requirement of the township right now. I'm just asking, you know, out of the goodness of your, because you own that property. I believe you own that house?
No, we sold it.
Oh, you sold that house?
There's another homeowner and you can ask him.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, with that, I'd like to get some feedback from the board as far as with all the things that were brought up tonight, if we should see a revised drawing.
Yes.
So, we know exactly what we're looking at and what we're voting on because there's a lot that flew around.
Yeah, no, they, they should be providing us updated plans based on everything that was discussed.
So...
So that we can approve, comprehend.
And I'm not sure if the deadline, if they would have enough time to get everything for the next meeting or...
Yeah, the next meeting's on the fifteenth, I believe. That, I think that's the Tuesday. So, if you can get plans by the end of this week, we can get it on that agenda.
Do you have a list of all the things that were brought up?
I was just going to ask that from you, Mr. Chair, if I had an idea of what exactly the concerns were besides...
I'll let each commissioner bring up what they had brought up. I don't have the whole list listed out, so we'll start with Mr. LaBelle.
I would have thought the petitioner would have took notes.
I'm sorry?
I mean, I would have thought the petitioner would have took notes. I mean, it's really not my job to do notes.
I think we were firing a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I'd say that, Mr. Carr, yours is pretty, I guess, as I expressed what your fire marshal had stated in that...
Well, you guys got on to the siding issue and the brick are better. So, if that's the only item, then we'd like to see the revised drawing that you have that shows the brick on the front and the turns on the side.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just a couple of things. One, that drawing that he sent is up on the screen. Two, when it comes to the bicycle parking, there is a standard in the ordinance for the location and the type of bike rack that's required. I did verify that the ordinance does state that for the irrigation, it just needs to be shown on the plan if it's provided. And just a point of clarification, just because it was talked about, the, when the fire department reviewed this plan, they were reviewing the site plan. So, they will look at it again once building plans come in and all that stuff can be addressed at that time. But that was just a clarifying point. Oh, and the meeting is streamed on YouTube, so if anybody needs to go back and look and see what was talked about, it'll be on YouTube.
So, the render, the rendering does look nice. So, I think what we want to make sure is that the drawings match the intent and so everybody's on the same page with it. So, was that your only concern to show plans was the facade?
And obviously, rendering, there's other things that don't match the drawings, right? Like the stoops on the exterior doors to the sidewalk, that's not drawings that just drawing. What I request applicant that comes in and there's numerous changes is, my recommendation to the board is always that we get a clean set of documents. If it's like one, that's easy, but...
If it was only the, the...
But there's things that they need to take a look at and they need to clarify and I think that they should...
And what Mr. Carr is bringing up too about the sidewalks and pads and the bike rack, this is the safety of the bikes that Mr. LaBelle is making sure that it has a safe access from the street sidewalk onto the property. They're not cutting across the parking lot if they have access to get the right...
So...
Can, can I step in real quick? My, my name's Chad Nickel. I do think that we talked about a bunch of items, but a lot of items were addressed and taken care of. And I think most of the recommendations were done administratively, like the building and the brick. That's the only thing that's different.
Not sure of Mr. LaBelle's list yet, so...
Okay.
If there's only a couple of things, that's one thing, but we'll have to see what's on that list.
From what I had taken back there, okay. Thank you. Are you all set? Brian?
Yeah, no, I think Mr. LaBelle probably got his, because a couple of his points, I think, need to be addressed. The photometrics, the bollards around the transformer, the proximity to the vehicular traffic and the siding. And again, if they're going to use this rendering, the rendering should match the drawings because again, details of this, the drawings beside the siding. So, I just, what are we approving from a site plan perspective? Because it's just site plan that we're looking at and so that's part of the vehicular and pedestrian traffic and the flow.
I think we're going to, we possibly postpone this until we get...
Yeah, my recommendation.
And then next time we look at it, we can just say everything's been handled and we're done.
Yes, Mrs. Vosberg?
Do I have that, do I have that look on my face? I, I do think we need to provide a list because many things have been talked about. They have addressed some items here and then some things that were addressed, that's not...
Well, that's kind of one, so...
Right, but I'm just saying, we need, I don't want to make the list yet.
Well, Brian brought up to match the renderings to the...
I've got the list here, just somewhere in my drawer.
All right, thank you, thank you. Go ahead.
So, as we go through it, if he wrote down what Brian is asking and writes down what Rick is asking for, if anybody else has anything, we can add it to it.
If the secretary has the list, it's great. Here it is, please.
Are you guys, are you guys all set for Mr. LaBelle to mention the things that he's looking?
Trying to look, we're writing down just to confirm what we've got and what we've addressed.
So, maybe what, when we're done, you can tell us what your list is and we can make sure that your list is...
That's reasonable.
What we're looking for, okay.
Thank you. The things that I did bring up was the, the height of the building. If you can make sure that it's depicted on the drawing that we do not exceed the maximum allowable height. Secondly, was the location of the bicycle parking spot to, so that we can make sure that we have safe egress and exit from the, from the parking lot. The third thing that I had on my list was the building materials, as Mr. Carr. I, rendering is great, but I'd like to see on the drawing, just as you have on your, on your past drawings, you know, with the, the drawing of the building with an arrow going, saying brick, metal, metal flashing, if it's flashing on the, on the, on the soffits.
You want a sidewalk cut.
What it's made of, you know, all of that.
Just a little more detail.
A little more detail as to what, what we have, so that when I do make a motion, I can reference that drawing so that we have something clearly, clearly stated. Irrigation was another thing that I brought up. You've got a lot of new trees, a lot of new shrubbery going in.
I just want to step in, but that was, I think Jonathan brought up that that wasn't a requirement.
Okay, then that's, that's fine. The, the over illumination of the lights, I'd like to see a photometric of the light, the lights. I think, you know, with your, your site engineer knows exactly what I'm asking for. A point by point illumination drawing. And then also, because of the transformer with the parking lot and the hazard of hitting that transformer, I'd like to see bollards in front of that transformer. That's all I have, Mr. LaBelle. Oh, I forgot about it again. The sidewalk depicted on the drawing, heading from...
To be extended on Baker.
Along Baker. I'm sorry?
Right, he did, he did ask that too, yeah. And the average, so whatever the average is that you don't exceed the twenty-eight midpoint, yeah.
That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything to add. If you want to run through the list to make sure that we're all on the same page and then we can go from there. Yeah.
This is like homework here. So, sidewalk along Baker extending to the south property line, bike parking showed on the drawing based on the ordinance standard, photometric plan being revised, the elevation drawing reflecting the brick on the front more than simply the perspective that we've...
Cut sheet on that as well.
Yeah. Matching this perspective that's up on the screen with the site, stoops and walks, building height shown on the plan, average building height, you know, as per ordinance on the elevation, so...
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to postpone making a decision, given the applicant up to six meetings if it's required, to, to make these adjustments so that we have a clear and precise drawing. Looking for a support.
Hey, Mr. Chair, can I just ask one more thing? Did we address the...
Hold on one second. I got a motion by Mr. LaBelle, supported by Mr. Klonowski. And with that, if you have any questions or comments?
No, we just, did we, wasn't there a tree shortage?
Oh, there was, yes. Two frontage trees.
Oh.
Sorry.
I overlooked that again. I'm sorry.
I don't think you overlooked it. They still have to comply with the Gifford Webster stuff in addition to whatever the list we gave them. I mean, it doesn't, Gifford's Webster's. Because there was one tree shortage on each side, but I mean, they have to just...
There was two trees missing on that, so we'll get those added in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. With that, I have a motion to postpone it for up to six meetings. Motion by Mr. LaBelle, supported by Mr. Klonowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. If you get all your information in, in time, you can maybe be on the agenda for the next meeting and get things started, so...
We appreciate it, thank you.
Get it all cleaned up, so we're all at the same thing. That would be... Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we do not have any presentations, reports or discussions on anything. Commissioners have any comments? You got three minutes. Mrs. Vosberg? We're going to set the timer. No. Mr. Hyder?
One question on the, more on public comments. Usually the public comments that are for the public are related to non-agenda items. The agenda comes in on, that's when the, they should talk, right?
It's been brought up numerous times, but we were told that when they have their three minutes, they can talk about whatever they want, agenda or non-agenda.
Okay.
But their mind and that's what came...
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Carr?
Thank you.
Mr. Renault?
I'm good.
Mr. Klonowski? Mr. LaBelle?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Jaworski?
I just want to say one thing. Looking around the township right now, and a lot of the decisions that we made, and a lot of the decisions that we made that were, we got a lot of pressure from, I'm really excited, encouraged by all the building that's going on in this, in the township. There is some really being done out there. And a lot of the things that the public has addressed, and they're, and when we feel their concern, that's always a good thing. But I'm seeing a lot of the decisions we made really are causing, so, good job to everybody.
I think we try, you know, so. And we got good support from the other three people sitting up here with us, so it all helps.
If I could just add, there was some decisions that were made by the, by, outside of this commission that I'm not very happy with, but we do what we have our control or our opinion over.
And I do not, I do not have anything else to add, so with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine.
Eight forty-seven.
I'm sorry, eight forty-seven.